Loyalty is you put the needs of the school above yourself. And care means due diligence, doing research, doing your homework, and really using all of your faculties and senses to make the best decision possible. I don't know that anybody does that better than Abby.
Sure.
And she's been great on committees. She can process information and come up with questions at the speed of light.
[laughing]
And she's one of those people that grasps onto the notion that these crucial, difficult conversations are part of the process here. She doesn't shy away from any of it. So it's a good role model for all of us. It's been good for the board, certainly good for our community. And I wish I had a little more time with you on the board, but I want to thank you for all of your time we've done for our kids. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Yeah. I'd like to say I came on the board with Abby and was always happy to be the lesser light in our tenure together. She's smart, fearless, principled, and maybe worry about taking my life, my hands might disagree with her.
[laughing]
But, yeah, I'll miss you, will miss you.
Oh.
Yeah. Abby, thanks for what you've brought to this board. You've, I mean, some of it's already been said, but, you know, you are incisive and you have challenged us at times to think a little bit differently than, you know, and to not just settle for group think. And challenging the board like that has caused us to come up with better results, and I thank you for that.
And I would just like to say, you and I, and Galen, we all started at the same time, and you and I have worked hand in hand on certain things, and we have been opposing on certain things, but all along the way, you've always been open to compromise and conversation. And I have loved the opportunity to work next to you and with you, and I'm so grateful. You know, not many people know, except for, I think, the nine of us sitting here, how much work goes into being on the Board of Ed and how many hours we have to put in. And you've been really, especially on Personnel, till 2:00 in the morning, at times, really helpful and put in four years, and so we're really, really, really grateful to you. And we have a present, because anybody who knows me knows I love presents. Thank you. So, and we're gonna make you have a picture, too, so. If you don't have one. Congratulations. And, last but definitely not least, Seth.
Just...
Oh, do you want to do? Do you have? I'm sorry. Please forgive me.
I didn't prepare any remarks, but I would say that this has been one of the most rewarding and frustrating, and then rewarding again, experiences of four years of my life. I think it's been a tremendous learning experience, both in terms of learning the way things work and the way school districts work, and about curriculum, and just opening my eyes to things I just didn't know about before, but also personally learning in terms of teamwork and accepting my own limitations. So it's been, it's been really an amazing experience, and serving the community has been something that's been, I'm very glad that I did it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Abby.
Thank you, Seth. And our next honoree or recognition tonight is Seth. And Kirk had asked to start us off.
Well, Seth, Katie mentioned the amount of time that's involved in serving on this board, and you have served admirably and are to be committed for 12 years of service on this board, not necessarily for your on-time arrivals, but certainly for the 12 years of service in two key areas in which you've served and you provide a value added in many. The two key areas relate to the reconfiguration of our school facilities, which has taken place and continues to take place and is a critical element of the district's ability to deliver competitive educational performance. The other area where you have been a key player has been in the area of whole-child learning, and particularly in those areas which relate to bullying, because as we all know, unfortunately, our students today are faced with issues relating to anxiety, to depression, and to bullying, and so this is a very important area in enabling the educational process to be competitive. So thank you for everything that you have done, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'd like to say that as a newer, a very newer member of this board, a little irrelevant to you, related to your experience.
Infantile.
Yeah, a baby. That your guidance on, I really, I'll say for both of you, you know, the amount of experience that the board is losing tonight is tremendous. The, I don't think it's ever gonna be well-recognized by the town unless you're on the inside of the process, how much work it is, as has been described, but also the knowledge transfer that occurs when folks are on the board for a long time and help newer members get into their place and grow on the board. So I want to mention in particular that I greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
12 years. God bless you. So I was thinking, the four years I've been here, as Greg alluded to, you've been a mentor, a father figure, a brother, and a real confidant at times to be a shoulder to cry on and a punchy bag to punch at at times. So I can't thank you enough for the hours and hours and hours that you've put in, policy guru, the facilities, I mean, really, really working hard to create that committee as well as all the work that went into, before any of us were on the board, that pre-existed any of us. So I just want to thank you for the impact you've had on the district, on our students, and on our town. And I know that you will not be far, because I have you on auto dial. And again, I think what Greg said, the history that you have has been really helpful to all of us, and you've done a real year, and so I'm grateful, and I'm gonna miss seeing you next week.
Can I speak in a word?
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry. I'm so excited to get out the present.
That's right. No, I just want to say, I've never met anybody who puts the community first, always puts the community first and thinks of the right thing to do. And Seth, and it usually takes me about 18 months later to realize he was right all along.
18 months.
But, gentlemen?
He's a gentleman.
Yeah, you know?
He's a gentleman.
That's right. You're a gentleman, and your perspective is wonderful, and, you know, it's just been, it's a huge loss. Thank you very much, Seth.
Can I give you a present? You want to speak first? Brevity, I didn't say anything about brevity.
Well, I, yeah, I purposely did not draft anything, because anything I would've drafted, everybody would've fallen asleep during anyway.
And I forgot to mention self-deprecating humor.
Thank you all, and I want to thank every single board member that I've served with over my 12 years, because I've learned something important, or lots of important things, from each and every one of them. It's been an honor and a pleasure to serve the town, and just thank you, I just can't, can't believe it's over.
Now, presents. Oh, just the case. And now, the whole board is gonna love this, because I would like to do a picture of all of us. Okay. So anybody want to stand behind here, and then you guys want to stand in front? Yes. It was a question, I shouldn't have asked a question. Don't want...
Yeah, I don't see that. I love the pictures.
Yeah, that's, sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm not standing in the front by myself.
I think that's how it's seen on you. No, I'll see him. Okay, good. Oh, you want to sit there? Or you just want the specials? Oh. How often do we all get in a picture? We got it from the back. Oh, gee. It went to down very quickly. Did it?
Yes.
Quick reminder. Can we see that? It just kind of, it's like, gooch. Just gooch, maybe.
Don't touch gooch.
Okay.
We're good, we're good.
Tippy toes, guys. Let me just do two to be on the safe side. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I'm gonna stick that. All right, back to business. So obviously, we do not have a different tenants' report tonight. There were a couple of things that I will try and remember that he asked me. One was the budget assumptions. Does everybody have one of them? You do.
I passed out.
See?
I passed out.
Thank you.
Copy of the new ones.
Great. So there's a slight adjustment. You can explain it in your report. Okay, so Kirk will give us more in his committee report, and he will follow up on the strategic plan recommendations at our next meeting. Are there any board member comments?
I have a board member comment. As a parliamentarian, I want to point out that quorum is important. Please go get your blue shop, so we don't keep losing.
I got my question.
Good job. Everybody get out there.
It's mandatory for my...
We need quorum. End of report.
Thank you. Yes.
I just actually, you know, because I didn't prepare anything, I forgot to say, and it would be totally a miss of me to not mention the great experience that I had, that I have had, working with all the incredible administrators, incredible staff, and incredible faculty, and all the teachers in our amazing school district. And I've learned a lot from them as well, and I felt honored, and a lot of people don't know, as Secretary of the Board, your signature is on their paychecks. Everyone does direct deposit now anyways, so that's why they wouldn't know it, but I kind of felt proud, being the Secretary, a couple of times in my 12 years, that I was literally paying everybody, because I felt like they were paying me a lot. So, thank you. And sorry, I forgot to include that originally.
Nice, Seth. And you can just add one more paycheck, if you wouldn't mind. Just kidding.
I'll double your salary.
Thank you, I appreciate that. All right, so committee reports. Curriculum and student development.
We did that meeting, no report.
Communications, no report since last time. Facilities.
We had a meeting last week, and the only thing that we covered was, we went through the school security review that is a joint product of the Madison Police Department and the district, and with representation from the Board of Ed on that committee, on the Security Committee. And we just kind of took stock of where we are, where things need to go. Obviously, you know, with building changes potentially coming, you know, you need to not necessarily put money into schools that may not be here, but it was, it was a good, a good exercise, and we should do that every year.
Agreed.
That's it, committee report.
Thank you. Finance?
Finance committee met this evening and went over the change in the budget operating guidelines that Tom Skurice had proposed. If you all look in the agenda for tonight, third page in, this was a handout that was given last time, and if you look at what I passed out just before the meeting, or at tonight's meeting, what you'll notice is that item 11 has been changed, and it now incorporates the first bullet point under item 12, so that the request is now to include funding to support a Director of Guidance and Transition Coordinator as an upgrade from a Program And so Finance Committee voted tonight to include that as, to include that change as part of the, as part of the operating budget objectives to be discussed.
So just so I understand, that special, the Director of Guidance would be an upgrade, right?
Yes.
From a, from a Program Coordinator to the Director? And then, in addition to that, Liz's, Dr. Vataglia's?
Transition Coordinator.
Transition Coordinator would be part of the Guidance Director's duties?
Yes.
Thank you.
The Finance Committee also had a good discussion about the role that the Finance Committee plays, both with respect to the adoption of budget, budget assumptions, and also in the budget going forward, because I know, I've spoken with a number of folks on the board who want to be involved in the discussion, not only of the assumptions themselves, but also, obviously, in the budget matters or budget issues as well. And so one of the thoughts that we had was that rather than spend additional time on the assumptions, we have the assumptions here that serve as sort of a guide for the development of the budget. So we discussed the possibility of having a budget workshop on December the 3rd, where we could have not only the assumptions, but the numbers associated with those assumptions, as well as numbers for the overall budget, so that the assumptions and their respective costs can be viewed within the context of an overall budget. Am I doing okay so far?
You forgot, for, if you go on, you might get it.
No, I'm finished, so if I can off, I can't figure it out.
Would that be in addition to the other budget workshops that are already scheduled on the calendar?
Yes. And what we talked about was the idea of adopting budget assumptions formally is premature without seeing them in the context of the full budget. So we were talking about eliminating the board's adoption of the assumptions on the...
12.
On the 12, completely. We're not gonna do that piece, but what we're gonna do is say, okay, we have the assumptions, we've all seen them, please take these now, work through the numbers, and then we're gonna put a workshop with numbers in the context of the whole budget with assumptions on everybody's calendar earlier, so that there's more time to talk about it in the context of actual financial matters, instead of just kind of strategic and programmatic.
Yeah.
And then the Finance Committee would then go back and do their work, and then follow the regular calendar.
Yeah, and the hope also is that it reduces the requests on the administration for numbers, and it makes it earlier rather than later.
And it all, yeah. Go ahead.
This is change of, change of pace, I'm interrupting you.
[laughing]
The, the hope is that we, we don't want to get in a situation like we experienced last year, where we were up against the deadline when we had to make the decision. So we want to get started sooner rather than later, and looking at the assumptions, absent the numbers associated with them, makes it difficult to determine, truthfully, whether it's something that we think we can afford or not, and looking, and they need to be viewed within the context of the overall budget, because...
And I also think the 12th of November, we will have two new board members who may even have to recuse themselves from, right, adopting those, because we'll be still brand new at it. That'll be our first meeting.
I think the, so sort of the discussion was around process and the notion that adopting assumptions prior to adopting a budget sets us up for a sort of circular discussion, where we then later come back and say, maybe we don't want this, and then everyone says, well, but we adopted it upfront. So we, so I think we were talking about eliminating that step as a formal stamp of approval, rather than using these as guidelines.
Does that make sense?
Well, they will still be used as guidelines.
No, no, in favor of using these as guidelines.
Yeah, all right, sorry.
Can I, can you just speak to a little bit more about the role of the Finance Committee the rest of the year? I mean...
Well, I mean, if you, I mean, in reality...
Did you guys get to that?
The, we did discuss it, and I don't know that we came to a, I don't know that we came to a firm conclusion. I mean, the real, the real role of the budget, of the Finance Committee is involved in the budgeting process, but I think increasingly, everybody on the board would like to be involved in the budgeting process. So I'm, I'm beginning to look at that as more of a whole-committee type process, where everybody's involved with the Finance Committee, than perhaps taking feedback that we would get, let's say, from the December 3rd meeting, seeing how that could be incorporated, and then bringing that to the, to the subsequent budget workshops that are gonna be held. And the other role of the Finance Committee, frankly, frank, I hate that word, the other role of the Finance Committee is helping Stacy close out the books at the year end, and that's, you know, more of a liaison type role than an actual committee role.
I wonder, just a suggestion, and I say this only because when we met with Attorney Moonley and brought this to him a little over a year ago, he's, because there was a time when we thought about abolishing all of our committees and just doing everything at the board table, and he said, if you're gonna keep any committee, it should be statutorily the Finance Committee. And so I wonder if maybe, though, you move to like a quarterly Finance Committee meeting?
Well, I think...
And then do everything else?
Yeah, I think right now, Katie, we're, we're looking at, we're gonna look, and this was an idea that Greg brought up tonight, we'll look at how this budget process plays out this year, and that will provide some insight into the role that the Finance Committee, what contribution can be made. And then after we've gotten through and adopted a budget for this coming year to take the referendum, then we can sit back and say, well, you know, we did this, we did that, and then figure out, you know, exactly what the Finance Committee, what the function and role would be going forward, based on, based on that experience.
Sure.
There's also no provision in policy that says that there have to be regular meetings of any committee. For example, Personnel meets only when necessary, so it's also possible, in terms of future outcomes here, that the committee meets very frequently, twice a year, and not really at all in between. So there's, there's a lot to explore.
Yeah, so Michael, right there. Yeah, I think just our business meetings are stipulated in the...
One other thing that the Finance Committee does, which I don't think has happened the past couple of years, is when there's surplus funds at the end of the year.
That hasn't happened in a while, actually.
Two years ago. The Finance Committee actually goes through, like, generally, the administration presents us with different options of where to put that money, and the Finance Committee makes those decisions. And the Finance Committee just does that as a committee. You just have experience.
So we just had this year, when, at the end of the year, they're actually, we were very close to on-target budgeting, but, and it got moved to a reserve fund for special funds.
So that's sometimes, but there's...
But isn't that typically what we've done? We've moved it immediately?
No, sometimes we've had like half a million, there's been times when we've had like $500,000. So we've been like, all right, so here's new instruments for FAN, and here, we're gonna put some here, and then we'll replenish the reserve fund, but there may be more than we need to replenish.
Or like buy forwards.
It just hasn't happened in a couple of years.
Or buy forwards on supplies for next year.
Yeah, yeah. Or prepay professional development or things like that.
And Stacy's been great at it.
Yeah, Stacy's, that is a committee role, it's not, that doesn't generally come to the board.
Good.
Any more?
Yes.
Thank you. Personnel?
Personnel committee. We met tonight, our single agenda item was to continue our discussion in terms of researching a possible employee engagement survey for the district. Our committee did some research in between tonight's meeting and our last meeting, and a couple of things that we looked at, we have to reach any conclusions to report back to the board, but we feel we're further along in terms of identifying both, a couple of companies that would independently potentially administer and are in the business of administering surveys for districts. They have a pool of questions that the district can select from and identify and craft to its own liking, what a survey would be looking like, it would be independently administered, has provisions, obviously, for anonymity as well as confidentiality. And we're also looking at models that, you know, if, and there would be a cost associated with some of the models that we're looking at, but also some of these models provide for, if you purchase a year's license, that you can, the board can certainly do its employee engagement survey, but then the district can also use that license to other assessments under the same contract for the year. So we're still in the investigative stage, and one of the questions we're asking is to look for references, to see how other districts that we're familiar with, similar in size, maybe, that have approached this question, how they liked them, if they've been worth the price. So we're in that process right now.
Thank you. Policy.
The Policy Committee canceled its meeting tonight, so there is no report. We play the usual role of the Finance Committee where nothing happens. The, I will...
That was not nice.
I will remind everybody that we have four second readings on the agenda. We have received no comments regarding any of those items, even the very controversial sunscreen application in school policy. So you have those in front of you to read, and we'll have a third reading.
So it does go to third reading?
End of report.
Thank you. There's no Learn Measles... Oh, there is a Learn Measles report, thank you, Emily. You're welcome.
The Learn Board Directors met on October 10th. They heard from the Groton Superintendent of Schools, who talked about the challenges they're facing in closing two middle schools in their district and relocating students to a new facility on a shared campus. They also talked about...
I'm sorry, what district was that?
Groton.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Also talked about, from a legislative perspective, the effort on regionalization in terms of regionalizing services for cost savings, like a joint request for a payroll system that would, districts would share. So not so much regionalization the way that we've thought about in the past, but like we do with other, you know, shared back office sort of services. They also had their roundtable, where they talked about sort of hot topics, vaping and cyber threats were among the hot topics that were all, not surprisingly, discussing, and what they're doing at different districts, and internal training around cyber threats as well.
End of report. Audience response? I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
There's no items.
There's no items. Okay. No motion. No items to approve? I see that now, sorry. I need a motion to approve the trip to the Galapagos and the Andes.
So move. Second. Is that what's in the gift box for me?
Yeah, that's a ticket. You were chef roasting lots of high school kids. Correct. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Absent, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the October 15th Board of Education meeting.
So move. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absent?
I'm abstaining.
Motion carries. Yes, I see that. Any future agenda items? Abby, now's your chance, you can load us up. Meetings and dates of importance are attached. I need a motion to adjourn.
Kate, just number 12, it's old business.
Oh, I did not, thank you, it's very, about. Any old business?
Just want to see how to bite on that one.
I need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Yay, Seth. I need a second.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wow, this is record time. This is gorgeous. I didn't even think that this was happening. Here we go. All right, famous last words, Abby.
Why don't I hug you?
Did she just hug you?
I'm really optimistic it could be a long as well, because...
No. Well.
Thank you. Not necessarily getting critical, I don't think we're gonna be...
This is good.
I'm very excited. Apparently, I'm staying in the band as well, because.
No. Wow.
Thank you. Not necessarily getting critical, I don't think we're going to be.
This is big. We're going to, it's just, I mean, we're going to do something. Glad, it was good to meet you.
I think everybody's comfortable.
All right, but I don't talk to you about all of this. Oh, yeah, they should. When they, oh.
Love you.
Can they keep their nameplates?
Right. So we're going to turn off the.
Absolutely. Do you still have Gerg?
We turn off the cameras.
I'll just, I'll just.
Unless another.
I'm trying, I'm trying to excuse to be more.